You might be able to convince me later. Just to help out.
I'm glad you're so helpful. That's why I like you so much. Oops.
Recording in progress.
Good evening. This is a work session of the Greenbelt City Council. My name is Emmett Jordan. I'm the mayor.
Kristen Weaver, Mayor Protem.
Silky Pop, City Council.
Danielle McKennie, City Council.
Jenny Pompey, City Council.
Amy Nysol, City Council.
Okay, any information items for the?
I have, I think, two.
I have one.
Okay. Okay. So, you know, we hold work sessions on Mondays and Wednesdays occasionally to exchange information with community stakeholder groups or to gather information from the staff, community advisory boards, or residents. No formal votes or actions are taken at our work sessions. Work sessions and also our council meetings are open to the public except for executive sessions as authorized by state law, so that residents and others can observe council deliberations. We do strive to provide a reasonable opportunity for the public to voice opinions on the matters being considered, so we'll pause periodically for public comment. During these times, if you're in the room, if you raise your hand after being recognized, you can go to the podium there, and we need for you to state your name and where you live in Greenbelt. If you are watching on Zoom, you can use the Q and A tab on the bottom of your screen, and once again, we'll promote you. If you raise your hand, we'll promote you so that you can speak. Or if you submit a question on the Q and A tab, we'll share that information. And if you are on cable TV, or if you're watching the live stream on Facebook or YouTube, you can send us an email. Of course, cable TV, you can send us an email. The email address is questions@greenbeltmd.gov. So with the public comment, we want you to hold it to three minutes. And as always, you know, Greenbelt is Greenbelt, so let's, we're all neighbors. Let's be civil in our comments. Okay, that being said, tonight, we're talking about the American Rescue Plan funding. It was back in 2021, nearly four years ago, President Biden signed into law the American Rescue Plan Act, and that provided $1.9 trillion to speed up the recovery, the country's recovery from COVID-19. So back in 2021, Greenbelt, we received close to $23 million. And we brought in the community to partner with council to come up with the best uses for that funding. At the very beginning, we actually contracted with a firm to help us do public outreach. So tonight, we're going to get an update. The money had to be all allocated or dedicated, or what's the word?
Encumbered.
Encumbered.
Obligated.
Yeah, by December 31st. So we've managed, we've worked through about three quarters of the projects, and there's about one, about 25% is left or is in progress. So we're going to get an update mostly from Tim George, our Assistant City Manager, but I'll kick it over to Hosway Samron. Mr. Samron, how are you this evening?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. I'm doing well, thank you. It's a relief to be here before you on February 5th, after about a month of, a little over a month of encumbering every dollar of ARPA money, over 22 million. A lot of projects, a lot of great initiatives. And some of it, it's the timing on our end to encumber some of these funds with council support last year. You're going to see the benefits of those encumbrances over the next two years, particularly around the food subsidy programs, the CARES expansion. You'll see that reflective. And also the Learn to Earn program. Key initiatives of council that are being funded over the next 18 months, so that continuity of services will continue. That's particularly important because we're seeing bad news around budgets and budget constraints and deficits all around. So that's something that as we're heading, as we're heading into the 2026 budget planning process, we are going into it with certainty that at least those programs will continue, and our residents can feel reassured that we're, we have already funded those programs. I don't want to steal Assistant City Manager Tim George's thunder on this. He's been leading this effort with the team, and at times, it's felt like herding cats, trying to get all of this work done, but we're here. The name of the work sessions a bit can be a little misleading wrap-up because it's not quite a wrap-up, but many of these things are just entering their planning phase because we've committed the funding now where we're going to be executing that work. So many projects still ahead for us to complete. The significant projects that are upper-funded are the ball fields and parks. That work is going to continue in the spring, and we'll be working through those for the entirety of the calendar year 2025. But without any further ado, I'll let Tim take over from here.
Thank you, Hosway. I really want to begin by saying, this has been a massive team effort under the guidance and leadership of Hosway, really. And the whole team, Bertha and Dee and the finance team, put in a ridiculous number of hours in the last month just getting all this into the portal, which was really the primary requirement, was getting all the obligation loaded into the federal portal by the end of the 31st, and to show that we're obligated then, actually obligated by the 31st, and then loading everything into the portal by the end of January. And it was a big, a big pull, and they did a great job. All the department heads, directors, and staff did a fantastic job of pitching in. In total, and you have three pieces in front of you, the memo and the infographic, which are really kind of duplicated in the presentation. So we won't go through all those, but I want to highlight, you know, we completed over 130 different projects, spending almost $23 million. And as we go through it, we'll kind of show you how that impact laid out. Direct benefit to residents, over 4,200 residents got direct benefit through these programs, whether it was through healthcare vouchers, rental assistance, mortgage assistance, food subs, food programming. We spread this money far and wide through the community and really did a great job. Over 56 businesses received over almost $2 million in direct benefit, grant benefit, nonprofit benefit, to again, help them recover from the pandemic and continue to thrive. So with that, we want to jump into the presentation. Like to keep this conversational as we always do, so please interrupt me whenever you want to. We'll just kind of have a conversation as we go through it. And then, of course, I'll be talking at the end for Q and A.
You were talking about the team effort, and I just want to remind everybody, one of our former employees, Debbie Sandlin, was doing so much of the work early on.
Debbie was tremendously instrumental in setting up all of the grant programs. She did all the MOUs and worked with a lot of folks to get all those early grant programs going in. Without her, we wouldn't have been where we are now. So it truly was a team effort. I think every member of staff at all levels really played a key role. Even, you know, down to just the regular employees are using the equipment that we bought and then providing input to their supervisors for what they needed. Because nothing that was purchased or no program was started, was not done out of need, with a direct benefit in mind to the residents. And that was the guidance that we received from you all from day one, was that this money needed to go to support Greenbelt businesses and Greenbelt residents and visitors. And that was really the goal of what we did, as well as kind of recovering, using the lost revenue to recover. We stopped spending money when COVID hit, when we lost our revenue from the, from recreation and other places. We stopped buying cars, stopped buying trucks. We needed to use that lost revenue to kind of replace those, those things that we weren't able to do. So that's all part of this presentation. Want to thank James at the beginning because all the fun slides and images in this really is James kind of, I gave them a basic boring presentation, two-dimensional, and then he made it work. So we go ahead and get started.
Okay, and let's get that up on the cable TV as well.
Remember, there's a delay, right?
So briefly, we're going to, just a really quick approach to what we did, and you all, I think, know this is what we talked about a year or so ago, just a recap of how we got here. We're going to talk about the direct benefits, the project summaries, digging into the grants because that's really where the most impact was felt with our residents and our businesses, and then talk a little bit about ongoing projects, and then we'll get into some Q and A. Let's move to the next slide. So one of the things has come up certainly discussed in council meetings and with the residents is what, what was the impact of the $22.889 million on the community? We did spend, you know, money on city resources and city infrastructure, but the majority went to helping our businesses. And over, like I said, over 4,250 residents were supported. Now, there may be some double counting because certainly people that got rental assistance may have also got food assistance and may have also got other assistance. But as we look at each of the pots of money, Liz did a great job of helping count up a lot of the things through healthcare. CCI helped over almost 1,400 people with healthcare vouchers. So a lot of this really went far and wide. And then I want to show other projects that, that we feel really had citywide benefits and impact, although they may not have been directly benefiting like in terms of grant funding to a resident. Spring Hill Lake, Rec Center, and Buddy Attic Park both got brand-new playgrounds, renewed playgrounds, we put a new dance floor, a lot of biker trails, bus stop improvements, road improvements, police capability. So that's a whole list. I want to go through the whole thing. It's in, in your packet, but just kind of shows you the breadth of what we were able to do with this money. And really, most of this came from council with council's approval. You know, we brought these ideas to you all on a regular basis. We got a lot of feedback from council on what your goals were, tried to align these with not only your goals, but the, but the city manager's pillars, to try to make sure that we were kind of lining up the spending with the vision that we've been provided by, by city council. Go to the next slide. Just kind of a splash page, but just, that's, that's the new playground at Buddy Attic Park. No, that's the one at Spring Hill Lake. So that's the Spring Hill Lake Rec Center Playground, brand-new. The, you can see the, the basketball court has kind of been moved and made a little bit bigger. It's still not quite a full-size court, but it's, it's bigger than.
I think that is Buddy Attic.
This is when it had fencing and it's.
Oh, with the.
Now it's got grass growing on the side.
You can move to the next slide. Just another splash page just to show we, you know, we did quality of life, food insecurity, we had emergency needs. You remember, we started ARPA before we even had our first public meeting by council, putting forth almost $2 million for rental assistance, business assistance, nonprofit. And that money went out on day one. As soon as we received our first tranche of money, we put those applications out online, and people were able to get rental assistance, business assistance. So we started that before we had our lengthy engagement process. Next. You can move through these. These are just kind of splash pages, thanks. And that shows you, so that, that one slide right there, the kind of replacement of vehicles and equipment, shows you all the different things that we were able to buy for Public Works. A lot of that is equipment that will help maintain Schramm Hills Park and Brayden Field. Once those projects are complete, we got a new bus, which you all know about, so we have a second bus, both for redundancy and also for when we need to do extra trips with seniors. We found having a second bus would be very helpful. Next slide. Seniors or kids, or really anybody that needs a bus ride.
Council.
Or council, and if you need, you just call Public Works and you can book a ride on the bus as well. Just a few shots of some, some needed infrastructure projects. The picture on the left is a drainage culvert that had basically fallen into disrepair and was, had begun flooding the area road and around it. So we rebuilt that. The middle slide is the new dance floor. One of the things Recreation wanted was to have a dance floor that could accommodate tap dance and other forms of dance that we didn't want on the really nice wooden dance floor that's more for ballet and interpretive dance. So we created a second dance floor, and then just another shot of the equipment we've purchased. So this is a slide you all have seen before, but just wanted to highlight for, for any residents that haven't seen it before. We had a tremendous public engagement process. It started with a number of council meetings, talking with council about what they wanted. We had three open public meetings in the municipal center, one at Greenbrier, one at Spring Hill Lake. The consultant we hired, Novak, that then became Raftellus, had four focus groups that they met with community leaders to get their input on what they wanted. We had a, set up a digital website where in the first month or two, we had over 2,000 visits to the website. We got 110 posted note ads, so they could actually go online and do a little posted note of ideas that they'd like to see. And then 300 people filled out our web survey. The top line shows the total number of meetings, which is almost 50 meetings that we had with council, whether it was a, just a work session in review, a regular council meeting where you all approved things, just to show you the breadth of how many times we met with community and sought your input.
Let's be clear, where it says council meetings, that's where it was listed as an item. It wasn't the whole meeting on.
Correct. Yeah, so the, so we had certain work sessions that were specific for update and other meetings where it was an agenda item, where you approved an allocation, or we had a discussion, but it wasn't necessarily a dedicated meeting. So how did we spend the money? The pie chart and the table on the right is the total expenditure of the $22.88 million, color-coded onto the pie chart. What we tried to do on the, in the graphic to the left is show how does that relate to how much money and impact we had in our community? And you can see that we spent 10.21 million dollars, or almost 45% of the money on programming directly for resident, resident benefit. And that kind of add, that adds up the recreational programs, the resident support, and the health and mental health programs that we, that we did. We spent almost $3 million on direct benefit to our businesses and nonprofits to help them recover and be more sustainable following, following the COVID pandemic and their recovery. So that's kind of how we broke down the data, just to show what it, what it looks like. Next. So as Hosway mentioned at the very beginning, and the mayor did as well, 72% of the projects are 16.5 million or are complete. They are finished projects. Most of that money has already been dispersed, but those are, those projects have been completed. We have about, almost $6.4 million in projects that are ongoing, about 20, almost 28%. And the next slide, we'll have a little bit more information on those. Skip that one. That was a duplicate. So all the 6.4 million, Hosway mentioned this in his remarks, that includes the ball field renovations for Brayden Field and for Schramm. It includes, you all allocated $204,000 in food, food bank money to, for St. Hughes, for the, for Master Touch, the Sardi's gift boxes that we do, and that, that food support will go through the end of 2026. So that's, that's, that's two years' worth of food support, so we'll continue that through our, through our programming. This also includes $1 million for the chillers in the community center, so that we can have air conditioning that is reliable and that works, bike pad, bus shelters, workforce development. We have over $50,000 in workforce development programming to help, but not, not just youth, but anybody in Greenbelt that wants to kind of work, work towards getting another, a different job or workforce training. And then, of course, Learn to Earn, we're going to be running that program for two additional years. So we have money for the, for the, for the businesses that are going to give internships. A lot of times, they do paid, they do free. We pay the businesses for the internship so the kids can get paid for their internship. The businesses will still provide the service. We, ARPA will provide the funding. And then we have the same consultant, Charisse, that did the, the last Learn to Earn program is going to stay on to do the next two iterations, '25 and '26. Next. So final projects, as we wrapped things up in the last week of December, additional funding became available. Part of that was the, a big part of it, I think, was the animal control, that we had wanted to have a building brought in. We found out and were told by the county that they were going to require a far higher level of building elevations, engineer drawings. Even though it was a pre-made trailer, they still wanted a full set of engineer drawings and all sorts of things. It was going to almost quadruple the price of the project, up into the 400s. We didn't have that much ARPA funding remaining, so we bought the HVAC units that you all approved, and we're going to do some renovations to those buildings. The residual money was left to reprogram. In reprogramming, we looked again at what you all had directed us to do, where you wanted us to spend that money. So a lot of it went to directly to resident benefit. Some of it went to kind of relieve the pressure of the FY '25 budget, which will also relieve pressure on '26. For instance, the police needed new hazmat equipment. The hazmat equipment that they have for emergency response was, was a 20-years-old. So it was far enough, it was, it was old enough that it was not useful. So we were able to use some of this ARPA money to help them redo that. All the, all new medical kits for their vehicles, so they now have brand-new PPE medical apparatus in their vehicles. All of this was important things, things that would have been spent in either '25 or '26 that we were able to use the money for other issues. The Greenbelt Recreation has a kayak program for the lake. They needed a trailer in order to get the kayaks to and from the lake. One of the things that had been on the replacement list for years was an electric cart, so they, for an EV cart, so they could actually drive mulch and other things around Buddy Attic Park and other places without burning fuel. That was another thing we were able to purchase with, with these, with these funding. And of course, city, the, the, one of the big-ticket items was computers. Again, that is IT infrastructure that we will use over the next two years to help support all of the, all the departments in the city in terms of what their IT needs. And again, that relieves pressure from the '25 and the '26 budgets.
The cart, just to add to the cart, this is going to support the kayak program. The EV cart can also tow 1,500 pounds, which is more than the kayak trailer with the 10 kayaks. So.
Mayor Protem.
Just thinking about that, is that something that then, I, I, we have heard some complaints from some residents about some of the, Public Works trucks that drive on the paths in Buddy Attic, for example. Is this something that would be, you know, I guess though EV trucks are often heavier, aren't they? I was going to say, is this something that, that could be used instead of some of the, to do some of the maintenance in Buddy Attic while causing less damage to the, the trails?
The, yes and no. The cart will support the kayak moving in through the space, so that it's a better use of the EV cart versus the Ford 150 that was used the last two events to move the trailer on. So this vehicle will help with that, and it'll be easier to navigate because it's smaller.
Yeah.
And whatnot. For the park maintenance, it's challenging because they have to drive around the entire park picking up trash, and that's, it requires a larger vehicle. The bed on the EV cart wouldn't be big enough to.
Okay.
To collect the trash. But with the conversation around park maintenance is still in the works, where we continue to look for less impactful ways of maintaining the, the, all the trash receptacles and all the work that's required around the lake.
Okay, so it may not be this solution, but you're, you're talking about some others.
But this is part of the solution, right? With the kayak program, there's, there's, we receive good feedback from the, from the two events that happened during the year. There's a request to do more of these types of event. Recreation's wanted it included as part of their, their programming, so we'll have more of those activities. These, these two pieces of equipment are going to help facilitate those, those activities without having the impact of the larger vehicles.
Mr. Roberts.
Thank you. I was wondering, do we now have two electric carts, or we got rid of the, the other one that you had?
We have two.
So you have two.
Correct.
So we can start having cart races, or? I think that would be an excellent program for recreation. But, okay, well, I'm glad you have two now.
Thank you.
Maybe we can get more, but I, I do think that vehicles such as those carts could do the majority of the stuff that needs to be done around the lake. I think the, the times that you need a big truck going around there should be few and far between, really, because you can do all kinds of stuff with them, little carts. Like you said, you can haul all kinds of stuff with it, so. Anyway, thank you.
Roberts.
So the next slide is not necessarily intended to be legible on the screen, but I want to just show, and it's in the, it's in the handout. That is basically all of the projects, both active and completed, that we've worked on. And just kind of wanted to show, because there's been a lot of talk about what have we done and how we spent the money. And I just want to give you a, a single-page snapshot, so you can literally go through the 100-plus projects that we've worked, worked on and see what's on the screen. So a lot of the projects we've talked about are on there, Schramm Hills Park and other things, HVAC repairs, door repairs, that sort of thing. Next. So granted, I mean, this is kind of the fun part, and for, for us, I think this is really the exciting part, to show how much of a direct impact we've had on our residents. Some of these numbers are brand-new and fresh. I got heard back from CCI just this week with the, with the additional 25,000 that you all allocated for them a few months ago. They were able to help another 400 folks with vouchers. So they, they helped over almost 1,350 Greenbelt residents with medical vouchers, dental vouchers. So some of these numbers have been refreshed. I do want to say that the food assistance number is just the five food banks that we're, we're helping. It's not the, the 2,300 people that actually got food assistance, so that'll come up in another slide. But again, it's almost, almost $5 million of support directly for these grant programs, and almost 4,300 folks have been helped.
Well, you know, certainly from the very beginning, the rental assistance was, was a high priority. You know, residents and council, and just everybody realized that it was such a difficult time. So of, it's close to $3 million. Somehow, it'd be kind of interesting, I guess there's no way to really find out how many people actually avoided eviction and actually see, you know, now, four years later, after the assistance, how many of the people are still there. But it would be interesting to know somehow. And that's true with a lot of the programs that we have allocated funding for the business of assistance programs as well, just seeing the real impact. I think we've got an incredible story to tell here, just in terms of what, what we did with the money and just how, how it's really made a difference. It's all about recovering from COVID, and, and let's face it, we still have not recovered, you know, as a city, as a county, as a state. So.
I have chatted with Liz, and she and her staff are going to see if there's any way they can kind of get an answer to that very question. For the business assistance, John and Zehan are reaching out to everyone that received a BURF or BCIG grant to get narrative descriptions from what they've done. How did they spend their money? What was the impact that those grants had on those businesses? So we are reaching out to those 50 businesses that got that assistance, so that we can kind of, you know, in the next phase of, of kind of telling their story, it'll be out on the Engage Greenbelt website, is to let, let everyone know what kind of an impact and how important this money was. So we are going to tag up with all the businesses, and as much as we can get kind of a resident response, we're going to be looking for, for that answer, too. So just a, just a, another demonstration of, of some of the programs and some of the spending.
The educational scholarships was an idea that came up about halfway through the process, when we're just thinking through what we'd use the money for. How, how many of those grants, scholarship grants, did we give out?
We did 44. So we, we helped 44 Greenbelt youth get, go to either college, technical school, or community college.
We should definitely find a way to invite those recipients back at some point and have a little punch and cookies and just see, see what's what with, with the money.
So just another, another graphic showing, you know, 325,000 for childcare, 500,000 for healthcare across three different organizations, and then, of course, the neighborhood grants at 50,000. And then, of course, the neighborhood grants at 53. Now, that number had been larger in previous presentations, but when we got to the final reconciliation of those counts, we found that about half of the, half of the folks that applied for tree canopy grants and were awarded and half that applied for micro grants never actually fulfilled and got back to us to get the money. So, and we have reached out, we let them know. So that was kind of disappointing to get. Again, that's kind of where we had extra money come in towards the end. It was almost $27,000 of those grant funds that were returned to us because the recipients chose not to carry out those grant programs. Just the same discussion, but on the business grant side. So talking about the nonprofits that we've helped. You know, and those are, all of these are local, Greenbelt-based nonprofits. All the businesses, of course, are Greenbelt-based businesses. About $1.6 million in funding went to those programs.
Let's see, was that B-CIG? You got the BURF and you got the B-CIG?
Yeah, so the difference with, so BURF, you all recall, we did three rounds of BURF. The first round actually came through the CARES funding that predated ARPA. The second round of BURF was really the, was the initial funding that you all did when we first got the ARPA funding. And then we did a third round. The difference really is that the recovery fund, you could use that for operating income and it really was a way to just kind of, an infusion of cash to help businesses kind of get back on their feet. They could buy inventory, they could help, they could pay down payroll costs, things like that, so they get back on their feet. The BCIG program was more related to a longer-term sustainable growth and support. So that was one where you could do a facade improvement. You could buy new, you know, benches or seats for your restaurant, a pizza oven, you could buy new equipment, things that would help your company to continue to be sustainable and grow. In that program, we didn't allow for operating expenses. We wanted this to be a longer-term, more sustainable set of funding, which is why we have two different programs.
Mayor Protem.
Yeah, this is more of a, I think, I mean, it's amazing to see it all laid out here. I mean, this was, this was a huge amount of work. I mean, it was, it was amazing to have these resources to provide to our residents. And I know it was an effort by, I'm sure every employee of the city did something related to this. But I guess my question, sort of broadly speaking in this, maybe, maybe different answers from Tim and Hosway. Of all these projects that we funded with this money, are there some that you wish we could continue as part of our regular budget going forward? Are there one or two that, that as you've dug into these numbers and just seen the impact? And I know we're lucky that we can keep some of the food grants going forward and some of the other things that we'll be able to continue for the next two years. But, you know, if you had a wish list of things that you, in your experience, saw were just tremendously successful and seemed like they were, had such a powerful impact that if we found a way to get some additional money for them, you'd like to see continue?
I go first, Pa? Should I go first?
Tough question. That's a tough question. I wish, yeah, I wish we had all of this.
Well, I know, and I think that's the thing. I think that's why, I mean, it was such an amazing opportunity that we were given by the federal government to disperse this money for local needs and do it in a way that met the needs of our community. And we truthfully will probably not have that opportunity again. But, you know, it's a little bit wishful thinking, I understand, but.
All the program we did was great. I think there's some that there's need that's present and it's not going to go away and there's no easy solution to it. One, the rental assistance program, for example, that's just an ongoing need and we're going to just see that issue continue to grow. Lack of affordability of housing, housing supply, all these services. The mental health programs are strong, oh, sorry, are needed. We are fortunate to continue some of that through the CARES expansion dollars that are included in here. Carrying that forward is a challenge because we have really difficult budget. So, you know, we're, we made all this effort to try to extend those programs as far as possible. The CIT, the Crisis Intervention Teams is a good example of that. We had, we had put it into the 2025 budget. We'll continue to fund it through ARPA as it's eligible. There, I can go on. There's, just today, I had our meeting with the, with the team around capital projects and planning for capital projects. So we've got EV infrastructure. Council was very supportive of the spending of 200,000 to install the eight stations at the community center. That we see a growing demand for that, for the EV infrastructure. The grants sources for those activities in the new political environment is going to be nonexistent, right? We're already seeing the clawback of those programs. I look at, as an administrator, we have so much services that we need to fund to just take care of the nuts and bolts. Trash pickup, for example. Just part of our capital, capital planning meeting today, we're looking at a 25-yard trash truck. It's 600 and some thousand dollars. And these are things that we need to replace. We need to replace because we need to have the equipment to pick up trash. And there are so many other things like that that are on our list. The youth center roof, it's 1.5 million dollars. We were, we feel fortunate that our Congress, our federal delegates were able to secure a quarter of a million dollars for that project. We're going to pursue another 1.1 million from the program, Open Space Fund, and so on, to try to make, get that project done. But to your answer is, I wish we had this capital money because we have so much capital needs in the city and take care of just some basic things. But we also have some of the social services that are going to, are going to bet. And one of my informational items actually touches, touches on the looking at our social services and the safety net in our community and how it's being tested and challenged in our community. But I'll leave that for after the, this discussion.
I'll give you a much shorter answer. But we'll put it on kind of my economic development act because that's kind of been my, my passion. I would say, you know, the educational grants, the workforce training, workforce funding, which we are, which we are funding continually, really to help our residents that are unemployed, underemployed, or looking for a change in job, giving them the resources they need. A lot of times, the hardest part is basically just taking a basic course at a community college or a technical college. It doesn't have to be college. It could be, you know, becoming an electrician or a plumber or another trades person. And I think for me, seeing how we got 44 kids into some sort of school and the other, the other part of that money was folks that Liz worked with through CARES that went, that were adults, not, should not, teenagers going into college, but adults that were getting trained and retrained. And that's what I would love to see would be able to, how can we continually fund providing workforce education and workforce opportunities to, for Greenbelters, especially for Greenbelt jobs, you know? And that's kind of what, what CARES and economic development are doing with their job fairs is connecting economic, you know, Greenbelt jobs with Greenbelt job seekers. And that, that's the ultimate win is when we find jobs in our city that our residents can have. And that's kind of where I would love to see more money spent. But it's tough. I mean, there's lots, there's lots of needs on it. But that, because then it's kind of a self-fulfilling, you know? You know, a rising tide lifts all ships. As more of our residents get jobs and well-paying jobs, then they're more sustainable and the community thrives. So that's, that's kind of where, that would be my answer.
Makes great sense, yeah. And with the slide that's in front of us right there, that business assistance, sometimes those kinds of programs can be very helpful in either attracting or just keeping businesses that are here. So I think those are a pretty good investment. Let's see, there's a question here from the public. Anybody online?
No, no, no hands raised. There's a couple people online, but no hands raised. Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, because people online aren't going to be able to hear it.
No, responding to you, rental assistance and the food. Because during the last two years, the emergency fund was basically untouched. Now it's gone dry and that needs to be continued because people need to eat and live and keep them stable.
Councilmember McKenney.
I was wondering if when people who are contacting, like, Greenbelt CARES, how are they like tracking and categorizing the types of requests for needs that are coming in? Because it may be interesting to see the requests and be able to align that to some of the types of programs. So getting, following up on Mayor Protem's question, like, if we're getting lots of requests for certain things, those are the things that we should be trying to figure out in our upcoming budget, how we're sustaining long-term. But I don't know if you have put a system in place yet to be able to analyze that data based on the requests.
From a constituent service perspective, now that we have a dedicated person being the triage officer through our, the administrative office, we'll be able to do that a little better. However, there are robust tools that we have already in place. So when, when a client, resident, constituent comes through CARES for service, there's an assessment that looks to serve the participant holistically. Whether it's mental health counseling or food subsidy or food assistance, rental assistance, there's a continuity of service that CARES Department is designed to provide. There, there's also other avenues to get into the services. So we may have a crisis call come through the police department. And Rachel and the team through a crisis intervention team will initially deal with that and then redirect or pass that client along for other services. Things that we maybe do in-house. If there are things that we're not doing in-house, then we're directing them to other organizations that can provide that support. Give you a good example, just this past week, we had a constituent call to get assistance restoring a gas line. Sorry, gas service for heating in their single-family home. And well, that allowed the person to come through the door and come in contact with the city and then they were redirected through other services.
That answer your question?
It did.
Mr. Hartman.
Michael Hartman, two, Co. Gardener. I think it's worth repeating the comments that the mayor made about the work that the city staff did for this. Mr. George and Mr. Salmaron and Ms. Gamar and Dr. Park. I think that what they did over the last two years or three years is really put into practice the values of the residents and the business community of Greenbelt. And I think that that needs to be said over and over again because putting that many programs together, taking the time to evaluate all of the programs and all of the applicants, it's just, it's really amazing, the work that they did. And if there was a Greenbelt Medal of Honor, then they should each receive one of those. Plus, every person, every employee of the city. Also, I know, as Mr. George said, that not only the department heads, but the people in each of those departments contributed to this. And the Mayor Protem is correct. We probably will never see this again, hopefully, especially for the reasons we got it. But I just think that the council, in your wisdom, has shown what the city stands for. And I think that's very important that people know that and appreciate it.
Thank you, and one final comment before we move on, Mr. Rollins.
Hello, ladies and residents. Someone may know why, I do not know why. There were about 81 slides that were projected that are not in this handout. I'd certainly like to get a copy of those slides. It's been suggested in the past and it's sort of suggested here, although it's not definitive, I believe. But it's been suggested that more of our ARPA monies were used for purposes of assisting people, people first, than were expended for capital projects or replacement items. The original frame of reference when ARPA was created is that jurisdictions, including Greenbelt, could use these for purposes of things that were, could not be completed or obtained because of lost revenue. And I thought from the beginning, as we were proceeding through our consideration of how to spend the money, that many of these projects were not being initiated and completed or many items were not being obtained because we did not previously have the revenue for them, but we have the revenue now and council and management sought to do it. So at some point, with regard to the complete projects list, I'd like to see a line item saying how much was expended for it. And I don't know if this is in fact complete. It was said more than 100 and roughly a little less than 100 listed here. Just to be certain that what has been suggested in the past is accurate. I don't know that it's accurate. I frankly question whether or not it's accurate. At the end of the meeting, if I could get a copy of the projected slides that are not in here.
I think the ones that weren't in the packet were mostly the images, which I'm sure can be, I don't, yeah, I think, I think it was just the pictures. I think the meat of the presentation is here.
Yeah, we, just, I mean, honestly, to save paper, we did not print the divider kind of splash slides. We just printed the informative slides, but we can certainly provide. And the full presentation, including the divider sides, splash sides, will be uploaded to the Engage Greenbelt website tomorrow.
Right. So two things, I would kind of, you probably already have this, sort of like where we are now, a timeline for these projects that still need to be completed. I think it would be informative to kind of have that mapped out on a timeline, particularly these large projects like redoing the fields. So I don't know if you already have that or if that would be feasible to put together over.
We, we have that, certainly have a timeline for all of the projects, but we don't have it mapped together. But we could certainly pull that together for the next meeting and just share it with you all, do it like a Gantt chart. Yeah, we certainly, we definitely do that.
Right. And the other point that was just brought up. So when the, when the federal government allocated these ARPA dollars to help us recover from COVID, you know, major part was $10 million was provided as an amount, a maximum amount that you could receive for lost revenue. So when that ruling first came out, I know you and Ms. Gaman and Ms. Samlin all worked really, really hard to try and, first, we were trying to do a calculation. And I think had we actually been able to do that, lost revenue, I think we would have surpassed the $10 million. But, you know, for the sake of simplicity and just kind of, since we didn't have to do it, we didn't do it. But so many, there was so much deferred spending, so many things that we decided not to do and put on hold because we didn't really know. And we may be in that position again, depending on how the budget shapes up, deferring some things.
We are already there. We went through the capitals needs list today and we put a lot of, a lot of the projects and equipment on the deferred equipment list.
Let's, let's keep moving.
Just another kind of splash slide, just showing what the programs look like when they're online and just kind of detailing out the amount of money. So go next slide. And that kind of wraps it up for us.
Councilmember Poppy.
Yeah, I just have a question. I know that we allocated some funds to some folks to do some door knocking to sort of raise awareness about grants, the availability of our grant, ARPA grant programs. And I was just wondering, you know, if there's any kind of wrap-up on that program and how that, how the door knocking went and if you thought it contributed to more people applying for the grants.
We will get a report. They sent some draft materials over the last month. They absolutely. They absolutely impacted our education scholarships. I think we were at 29 scholarships when they started knocking, and we ended up with 44. And for the most part, those came out of the Franklin Park neighborhood and other areas. So certainly that had a big impact. We were hoping we were going to have more of an impact on our other grant programs, but not as many additional applications on those. But certainly, the, the kids got the word, and we got more education scholarships.
That's great. I was just asking because this is sort of the first time the city has engaged in something like this, this kind of direct-to-the-resident door-knocking campaign. So I think it's, I just think the results can be really informative for us going forward if we want to do that kind of campaign again, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Pompey. I've, I've been thinking about that project. As we're planning for 2026, part of the, part of that planning process includes developing the elections budget. And one of the things we're looking at in preparing the budget is, looking at our voter engagement, 17% of our registered voters participate in our elections. So we're looking at ways of how can we, we increase that. Well, we know what we've done in the past. We've done mailers. We've done the postcards. We, we've done that print media. But yet, we, we still only at 17%, which is an improvement from 14% in, in the prior election. So we're, we're talking internally about perhaps a door-knocking, door-knocking and direct outreach effort may help increase the, the voter engagement and get voter participation. So personally, and, and as a, as a unit, or as a local government, I would like to see at minimum 20% engagement. So hopefully, we can get a 3% overall increase, which turns out to be a 10% increase in voter participation on our current voter. So I think that's, that would be a good target to, to aspire for. And if we can get to 20% of registered voters participating in an election, it will be great. It's not a very high level of participation, particularly for a community that's very engaged and civic-minded. But we can start somewhere. We'd start with bumping that up by 3%.
Great.
I, I wanted to just say something about the, the EngageGreenBelt.org website. And it's sort of served as a dashboard throughout the entire process, just in terms of posting our aspirations and ideas and sort of moving through. I was looking through it today, so it, it seems to be pretty current. And, and the way that you're talking, Mr. George, it sounds like we're going to continue to use this as a dashboard, as a storytelling tool. Because, you know, it's, it's really an amazing thing, as, as Mayor Protem said. Hopefully, this is a once-in-a-lifetime investment. Hopefully, the federal government at some point would see its way to actually creating more programs like this, where funding comes directly to the local level, and where we can make, our residents can make choices about how the, what the needs are and how the money is used. But I think it's very important for us to kind of evaluate what's happened and to, to be able to, to just tell the story of what we did with the money. I think it's a good example for, you know, senators and congresspeople, not just ours, because ours already know what we do in Green Belt, but for folks in other parts of the country that may not have the same kind of engagement as we have in Green Belt. So, I don't know, when I was in, when I was in college studying urban planning, urban studies, there's a lot of emphasis on program evaluation. So anytime you, you launch a bunch of programs like this, it's really important to close the circle and to do whatever you can to kind of gather the information and show, show the impact. So we've done a pretty good job of that coming up to this point. And I urge everyone to continue to do so, because we want to tell the story. Yeah.
Thanks. I wanted to thank Councilmember Pompey for bringing up the, the door knockers. I forget what we actually called that program. But I had the privilege of getting to meet a few of the people who were doing this work. And them doing the work got them so much more engaged in the community, and so much more engaged in the things that we are doing at the space and here, that the city is doing. It just seemed like such a perfect program of involving our community in a way that got them more involved and helped them get, or helped other people get involved because they were. So anything we can do to increase that kind of outreach in the future is just fantastic. And in regards to reporting, as a prior grant administrator myself, I can only imagine how stressful this whole project was and how glad you are that it is finished. I want to thank you so much for the work that you've done in getting this all together. And I would advise you not to twist yourself in knots to try and get too much data out of too many different things, because I don't think we're ever going to get $22 million handed to us again. But it is a wonderful opportunity for us to see where we could have the most impact, especially in things that are direct support to the community. So thank you again. That's from us, right? We're really kind.
Let's see. Counsel? Any other thoughts, questions?
This is a very comprehensive report. So, and I think because we've been getting regular updates that this, you know, it feels like a lot of our questions have been asked and answered in the past, so.
And do pass on our compliments to James on the, the graphics. Because I could, I could, yeah, I could, I could detect that when, as soon as I, as soon as I opened the slides there.
Yeah, it, it was, it was a little hurtful for me, honestly. I, I sent him a copy of my PowerPoint. And, and the first thing he said was, "Do you mind if I play with it a little bit?" And I was like, "Sure, sure, knock it out." And then it was completely different. Far, far better, but completely different. Now, James, James is, James is wonderful. And that's really what this, this, this piece, the infographic, really is meant to be kind of a standalone information piece. So we'll use that when we have public meetings, if folks want to kind of get a good snapshot of what have we done and what have we accomplished. This really kind of goes through almost all $22.88 million and turn, and breaks it down in a really kind of easily readable and graphic way that, to kind of show folks how we've been spending that money. And then, of course, anybody that wants more details, and they can go to the Engage Green Belt site, or they can reach out to us directly. We're happy to provide information. But I think this is a good standalone piece that you all can share as you need to.
Very good. Councilmember McKinney.
Will we continue to maintain the Engage Green Belt website in how long? Or is there a sunset of that planned?
We, I would like to continue until we have reported out on all programs. And when we close out the, the, the ARPA funding. So having it all allocated, we're not done. We'll, we'll be done when every dollar's spent, and we submitted final reports. And we, we are planning on an audit process as if we're going to get audited, because we were one of the largest recipients of, of ARPA money, so.
Just to add on to that, I mean, it would be great to figure out a way to at least archive some of the summaries and the great work in our new website design, if there's some section where we could not lose that. So just thinking about some of the things that we've learned about ensuring that we have documentation and continued history of things that we do in the city. I don't want that website to go down, and then it's just sitting on a shelf somewhere. So how can we build that into the new website would be great.
We have some infrastructure already built into that, because the Engage Green Belt website is a separate domain and different hosting platform than the Granica site that's currently hosting the greenbeltmd.gov. So we would, we would migrate to a new platform, and, and, and we still remain in the same domain, and it won't touch the Engage Green Belt website, separate domain, separate hosting platform.
One of the, one of the reasons why we went with a separate page, which may not be as important now with, with Civic, Civic Plus, because it's so much more dynamic, is that we couldn't do a lot of the fun things, a lot of the graphics, things that we want to do in the current website. The original thought was that Engage Green Belt would probably always be a website, and we could use that for special projects, special engagements, as the residents really assumed to like that platform, that it would always dovetail into our full website. Now that we have Civic Plus, or will have it, and have much greater capabilities, we may not, but, but, but the folks seem to really like that page. So being able to do special projects, if we do more door knocking, you know, that could maybe be on that Engage site, and then dovetail back into the main site.
Mayor Protem.
Yeah, and this was, this, it wasn't actually my comment, but that makes me think about, I think it was Hyatt, Hyattsville maybe, at, at MML, I think, last summer, had a really nice, yeah, they, they had a nice, and I don't know what website platform they used, but they had a nice system for some of their projects that really laid out sort of the stages and gave people feedback on. I think the one they gave an example of in the presentation was maybe, I think it was like a playground project or something, that they, and so I don't know, and, and maybe Civic Plus, and I think we'll have some of these features where you could very easily see, you know, what current step were we on, what is sort of the whole big picture of the progress? If there's any community engagement portions, there was a portal to be able to give that community engagement. But it was, so they, and I think there, they sort of divided it up by the projects. And I, I probably have notes about that somewhere, if we can't find it. Yeah, I, I'm sure I've got it written down.
And we did mention that when we came, was it Hyattsville?
Yes, it's Hyattsville. It's called Hello Hyattsville. And they, they, it's a resident engagement platform. So they, they post projects, they act survey on those projects, and it's lived separate from the website.
Yeah, and, and it seems sort of very focused on giving updates on projects that residents cared about. Because there's, there's, and, and maybe, hopefully, the, the new website may find some of those updates and things easier. But it was just, I, I'm very much looking forward to not having to dig through all the different places on our website to get, get to updates. What I was actually raising my hand about was one suggestion on this, you know, so that this, this one, the handout thing. It, it lists some of these citywide benefit projects, but you get into the grant assistance and the residence assistance and funds distributed. And it doesn't actually list sort of the examples of what those projects were. I think it would be nice to list their education grants and, you know, some of the various things just, you know, not necessarily adding more in terms of, of more diagrams, but just say some examples of the funds distributed as part of these direct assistance were education funds, you know, and so on and so forth. Just because I think if this is going to be a standalone, it's sort of missing that piece.
That's a great comment.
We, we also have an additional handout that we presented a couple, couple of meetings ago, that it's a bifold with an insert. And one of those, or two of those pages has a breakdown of the projects, and it has graphs that correspond with the area and the city that the investment was made, and the number of.
Yeah, I remember that. Yeah, yeah.
So we will, we will be making updates to all those charts and graphics, because it's a good way to tell the story.
Yeah.
Okay, and we, any comments? Please, go to the microphone, please.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that pretty much wraps things. I'll just say it again. So if there's some way to kind of get milestones on, on where we are with the, the projects that are still outstanding, because there's some very substantial projects that are yet to be done. And just, I don't know, there's a lot of work around the city right now in Roosevelt Center, at least, concrete work. And I guess some of that is partially funded or offset funding from ARPA dollars?
Not the concrete work. That's all capital funds that council had approved through the capital, capital projects.
Right. It's making a big difference in Roosevelt Center.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Okay. Well, let's move on to information items.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mayor Protem, or, Mayor Protem, why don't you go first?
Yeah, so one that I wanted to bring up was, and I know we're, what we have on our agenda for Monday, talking about legislation again, but there's one coming up that, that came up in some discussions of Green Aces that was SB 134, HB 42, and it's just the hearing is on Tuesday. And so I think the Senate hearing, the House hearing already happened. But this is one for some grants for solid waste recycling and things. It's a Maryland bill to fund wasted food reduction and diversion. And it was one that was, I guess, introduced previously and is reintroduced. And I don't know if that's one that we want to get, start working on something if that's, and we can, we can formally vote to support it on Monday if, if, if that's necessary. But the idea is, I mean, we clearly have some interest in the city in doing that. We've gotten our own food scraps pilot bill. We, we applied for that grant and, and some other things. So I just wanted to bring that up just because starting to talk about it on Monday night might be too late to get anything sent in for the, the Senate bill hearing. And I, there's, there's a nice Institute for Local Self-Reliance information page on it. But it, thoughts on that? Is that something that people would be interested in potentially supporting?
Let's, why don't we ask Mr. Carrington to, to give us a quick synopsis, and also to sort of let him, let us know what, what the possibilities of that moving forward. So I think Daryl can probably do that pretty quickly.
Okay. Well, I can, I can send out this, this, the, the bill of numbers and the, the links that I have later tonight. And then the other information item, I just wanted to, so I think on the current schedule for work sessions, we have the work session on February 26th scheduled as revisiting the council rules. I will be out of town that day. I will be on, on vacation all that week and will not be available virtually. So if we could actually reschedule that for a different time, I'd, I'd very much like to be present for that. So that was, that was just the other information item. And I'm sorry to have to do that, but this is, you know, one of the few trips that I take where I can't join in virtually, so.
I have no objections to that.
We're talking about maybe meeting, talking with the GHI board as well, right?
Correct.
All right.
So what are things that?
If that can be scheduled for that day, I mean, I'm, I'm always happy to talk to the GHI board, but I feel like that's one that I can provide my feedback. And if there, if I have any questions, can pass them to someone else to ask for me. So if, if that's something that can fill in in that day, that's one that I am, that I am okay missing. And I will just apologize to that board for not being there.
We can bundle, find something else to bundle, bundle that up with as well.
We'll work on scheduling a GHI for February 26th.
Okay.
No, I don't think we necessarily want to bundle this, because I think Mayor Protem would want to be there. But I had also requested potentially a meeting with our advisory board chairs.
When was the last time we met with them?
In the summer.
In the summer.
At a round budget, or if we want to wait till the summer, you know, I'm, I'm open, but I want to make sure we don't. There's just some, I think we need to provide some additional clarity on ability, attendance, and things like that. There have been some questions that I know that I've gotten from some of the board chairs that I think we can provide.
I think we've talked about whether the code of conduct needs revisions, or if there are additional guidelines or expectations that need to be created in addition to that.
So let's try and schedule that. I think, I think we need to. Yeah, and you know, we've not really had a good discussion as a, as a group about the list of work sessions or discussions that we'd like to have. So I, I've made some suggestions to Mr. Salmeron. And I really have not, I've heard from you, Councilmember McKinney, and Mayor Protem. But let's, if there are other work sessions that you think are imperative, very important to have, because we are about to go into the budget season, and that's really going to take up all of our time, pretty much, for a couple of months.
The calendar, what's, what's to be scheduled, and then maybe everybody can, you know, so, so we can fit it in, so we're not ending up meeting.
Yeah, so when's the next work session? We can talk about this next week, I guess?
Next week, we have regular meeting on the 10th. Then we have the, the town hall for elected officials on the migration issues on the 12th.
Four cities.
Four, four cities meetings on the 27th.
27th.
And we're scheduled for the 26th to meet, to meet on the standing rules. Well, we were, was scheduled for standing rules at the, now the, given this conversation, we're going to go and try to get GHI scheduled for the 26th. Okay, so they're tentative for now and they'll let us know after their board meeting.
Oh, excellent, excellent. So let's, let's put a pin in that thought and, and come back with some suggestions and try and prioritize and, and fill up the, uh, few spaces that we have. Okay? Mr. Summeron, you got any information?
Yes, I have, uh, I have four items, so I'll start, no particular order of importance, but just how I've, they came to me. Uh, we have, we've closed down playground at two Research Road. There's a sinkhole that was detected, uh, discovered today. Uh, GHI has been informed and they're looking to address the matter. Public Works is assisting and, uh, we hope to get a, try out one of these, try out the ARPA camera to get it in there, figure out what's going on.
Lose any kids in sinkholes?
Well, you know, I got pictures from, uh, Brian Kim, one of the, the sinkhole. It's five feet deep.
Oh, goodness.
Yeah, so, uh, on the playground at two Research Road.
Ship like that?
Yes.
Oh, damn.
So, yeah, recent, it's one of our newer recent.
Oh.
Mm-hmm. So that's, that's off, off limits. Yes, absolutely. So we'll, 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 we'll provide assistance and figure out what's going on. Storm preparations, we're ready to go for tonight's storm. We'll see what it brings. We expect to open regular, have regular openings with the exception of the Aquatic and Fitness Center. Uh, out of caution, we'll open at 8:00 AM. That'll allow our public works teams to come out and inspect and address anything that needs to be addressed. The third, we, the, the senior condos on, um, 7050 Greenbelt Road had the permit, the building permit has been issued. Uh, so there's equipment on site, so you'll see some activity going on there. That, uh, as you're all familiar, is a four-story condo market housing.
I'd like to see, get an update somehow on their timeline or just a little bit more information on how things are going to move ahead. So, I mean, it's great. I mean, we have been talking, it's been about three, two, three years since, since, uh, right, so we've been talking about, it's, it's, uh, I think it's 55-plus housing apartments.
Correct.
And, uh, it's a beautiful plan. It just sat there for like, almost four years. It's really before COVID. So if we.
We'll reach out to the team and see, and see what their availability is. So you want that in person or in writing, or what, what kind of short report?
Excuse me. Well, I think if it's very brief, I think actually in writing seems like it makes its more efficient use of time. And if there are any questions that come out of it, then we follow up with an in-person meeting. I think we could do a lot more of that for something like that. If all they're telling us is what's their status, how are things going? That could easily be presented to us in writing.
Yeah, but I mean, then we could, you know, have a few pictures again because I think some people, some residents maybe newer, they may not have seen any of that, uh, or heard any of it. So I think in person would be nice with, with a few slideshows and.
I tend to agree with that.
I think we do, uh, we're, we're already talking about the challenges of scheduling all of our work sessions for the budget coming up through the next few months. So I think opportunities that we have to do things that don't require, uh, using meeting time, but still get us the necessary information seems like a more efficient use of time.
And, and I don't disagree with you, but I think in this case, because it's a very interesting project and many people were interested in it, um, because, especially because it's a 55-plus community, I think it would be nice if you have some visual and some, some short, um, presentation about the project.
Particularly for seniors or for our residents that are curious and are thinking, would like to maybe move there. They want to know. And then there actually are people.
Say, I mean, if this is for residents, for people who might be interested, it might be better to do a town hall and not a work session because that would be actually a chance for the developers to come and for people to ask them questions. Like, we don't necessarily, as council, have to have a role in that. Like, the developers and the people can communicate directly, just like we did with the pool town hall, which I think went really, really well. Um, I just think that's an opportunity, you know, and, and council can attend if they're interested. But it could be a great way for, um, you know, our residents to really just interact directly without, you know, having to go through council, so.
I think a whole town hall might be a little bit over, over, overdone. Just my opinion.
It, it sounds like there's a lot of interest in the activity. I, I welcome feedback offline. The purpose of letting you know tonight is there's, uh, construction equipment out there. They're clearing the ground. They're preparing infrastructure work. Yes, and, and then people may be asking questions. So I'm sharing with the public that yes, those vehicles are allowed to be there. Their permits are all approved. So expect some earth moving.
Exciting to see that finally happen.
Yes, yes, it's good. It's good to see. It's good to see. Okay, finally, we have scheduled a meeting with the Director of Immigration Enforcement for the State of Maryland. Uh, there's three council members that have been invited and that's, uh, you know, we, we have open meeting requirements. So we got those limitations, but we're sun, sunlighting that this meeting is scheduled to take place. Welcome, feedback, um, or any, any questions or concerns you may have. Happy to follow up, but we're disclosing that we were having this meeting as a, in, in response to the executive orders and the challenges that it presents to our communities. That meeting is on the 13th.
During the day?
Just during the day. It starts at 10:30.
All accounts me out, right?
So from the, the, the folks that were identified for this meeting, um, Mayor, uh, Mayor Protem and Councilmember Pumping.
You already have to sign it.
Well, no, there, there's, there's, there's sort of been, it, it is not my decision to make. It's, it's council's decision. Those where the individuals identify, there's no, it's not a decision on, on my part. If council wants to have an open meeting, you know, it, it's got to follow its process. If council wasn't to designate different individuals to attend that meeting, that's council's decision. It's not my decision to, to make. My responsibility, my responsibility is to let council know that there is this meeting taking place. It's taking place at 10:30 on February 13th. Who attends that meeting is up to council.
Thank you, Jose.
Okay.
My information items.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, yes.
Um, I had one information item and that is that, um, Senate Bill 820, which is sponsored by Senators Watson and Rosa Pepp, just dropped. And that is the bill that would increase the maximum amount of criminal fine or municipal infraction from $1,000 to $5,000. So it's not scheduled for a hearing. It's hearing until, I think, March 4th. But that's definitely one that we want to be tracking. And possibly write a letter for or provide testimony for. And we will be writing a letter in support from PG CMA. So, um, Jose, I may be reaching out to you for an example of how this particular, you know, law would benefit our city. So, um, just a heads up on that. And then the other thing that I wanted to talk about was the GHI. The GHI meeting, I was looking at the topics for that and it looks like there are a lot of stakeholders involved in that because it's involving the story walk and pipes. Um, so maybe we should try and see if we could have someone, you know, from Parks and Recs there or the library who are in charge of that, the story walk program. And if we can have WSSC here, um, possibly to engage on that as well. I think that would be really helpful.
Yeah, we've gotten a couple of letters from, uh, GHI, uh, in regard to the story walk. Of course, that, that is a, was a American Rescue Plan, uh, project, a nonprofit grant. I don't know if council's had a chance to, uh, to look at it. This is a very nice presentation. Stretches from, uh, the library along the walkway, all the way up to the library and around the playground. So, yes, I, I, I think, I think there's a number of topics to discuss. Uh, I'm not sure that, uh, I think, it's kind of internal. I have this, this idea that if we were to reconfigure some of the, where the signs are placed, we could actually, uh, not have as many objections from, uh, uh, GHI. And at the same time, keep, uh, keep the story walks. I think it's a creative thing. I think it'll draw more people to the library and Greenbelt. So I'm not sure that having, uh, the library, a representative from the library there at the time, uh, I think that would be preliminary, a little bit too. I'd like to have the discussion first and then, you know, bring it back to the library since it's our land, but their, uh, project, yeah. It's sort of the same thing with WSSC. I think we need to strategize a little bit how to move forward. And I don't think we can really have, since there are a lot of legal matters that are involved with, uh, WSSC, I don't think we can, uh, have, uh, open discussion without having lawyers and whatnot. I really don't, don't want to do that. That's my, my feelings, my thought. Mayor Protem?
Well, I, I, thinking about that, I think we've, we've had a lot of conversations just with the GHI board. I'm not sure how productive it is to have yet another one without the, the, the people who can answer the questions in the room. I just think that, that we've had, I, I mean, since I've been on council, there have been at least two work sessions with GHI that have talked about the WSSC issue without it seeming to progress any further. So I think I agree with Jenny that, that if we want that to be an actual work session, we need to have the people in the room that can actually do the work. And maybe that means some preliminary things. Maybe that means, uh, staff or, or one or two council members going and talking to the GHI board and doing some of the preliminary work so that we know what we need to say to SS, WSSC. But truthfully, I think we kind of know because we've also, we've, I mean, this has been an issue for years. So I just, I'm going to register that I agree with Jenny that if it's going to be a work session, we need the right people in the room to do the work. But what I was actually going to say about the story walk is that reminded me when I was walking by it the other day, the post 20, there's a, there's actually sort of a hole developing under, like in the, in the dirt next to that. So that might be something, I mean, it's not a five-foot sinkhole, but, but I did notice it and took a picture of it and meant to, meant to send it along. But it's by, it's by, right at the end, by sign number 20, there's just sort of a, next to the post, there's a, some erosion happening that should probably be addressed before the post falls over or something.
That's interesting too.
Yeah, yeah. So I took a picture because, yeah, because I couldn't remember. I wanted to remember what sign it was. So which, which sign number it was, but it's sign 20.
Yeah, and, and I did, to, uh, Mayor Protem's point, the reason I suggested WSSC come is because I know that I have even been at a work session where we've talked about the pipes before. So it seems like if we're just sitting around and we keep talking about it, like we have to figure out how we're actually going to take action on that, which I don't see how we do without all the stakeholders in the room, so. Um, because we have not done that thus far, so.
Well, it's kind of been on, on GHI to, to actually meet with Mayor Protem. What you said is correct. The, the way that we can move forward is by actually having staff and a couple of people from council and a couple of people from the GHI board go and sit with WSSC. I just think we need to reinforce that because I, I think the GHI wants us to do something. They need to do something and we just need to do it. So I think there's two or three issues. Also, there's just some outstanding issues around stormwater management that need to be broached again. And I think, I haven't looked at the GHI, uh, agenda. What else did they have on there? There's some other topics with the city?
No, it was, it was the story walk, stormwater management and the pipes, I believe. Or maybe there was a fourth thing. Is there a fourth thing?
The, the agenda that, that Councilmember Pumping is referring to is what, what, um, we discussed during agenda planning, Mr. Mayor, and I sent out to the rest of council. And those are the three items that are on there.
Okay, I thought maybe there was a fourth. I was like, did I forget? No, okay.
The, the.
You were in and none of the rest of us were, so.
The, the, the fourth item is the request, that the, the mayor requested a convening of WSSC and GHI separately. So we, we are drafting that letter on behalf of the mayor to convene WSSC and GHI. So that, that's where we are with that.
Okay. Well, maybe that's more productive than having the regular work session then. Or we just address the other things with GHI and not try to deal with the pipes since we've already had those public meetings about it and it hasn't really progressed.
I just think we need to talk with the whole board and our whole council about it briefly. You know, so, you know, it just seems like there's so much pushback sometimes when we talk about agenda items and having work sessions. It's, it's a little frustrating.
I agree. I think it's frustrating for us too, Emmett.
Yeah, we, we just met with GHI four months ago, so.
Yeah.
That was before the story walk, uh, problem, yeah.
Yeah, and I think that's an issue that, another way to solve that is maybe one of us should go to the, uh, GHI board and talk to the GHI board instead of making it a council work session. Maybe we should go to them.
Uh, yeah, yeah, Councilmember Neesel.
Yeah, I read GHI's email with great interest and I greatly appreciated, I forget which council member responded, quite well. Um, we did discuss the story walk at multiple open meetings. I appreciate their perspective and I would not like to remove a public art piece because of a complaint that we received far after it had been completed. So I'm, I'm totally fine with speaking to GHI about this. But I, I agree, um, with Mayor Protem that this should be more of a, a discussion with a community partner and not necessarily a work session that the public needs to be a part of, at, at least for that particular point, for the story walk.
Yeah, so if it's council's will, we can not meet with the GHI board. And that's what I'm hearing. There's some follow-up. Uh, perhaps it would be better dealt with by just one or two council members and just meeting one-on-one with them. That's fine.
And if you're already working on a meeting with WSSC, then that, that's two out of the three issues. Um, I don't know what specifically there is related to stormwater we need to talk to them about beyond some of the things, again, that we, that are just, you know, general issues.
Yeah. Councilmember McKinney?
I guess just so I'm level-setting, I don't, I want to make sure I heard correctly. We're not saying that we're not necessarily not meeting with GHI. I think what we're trying to get to is what are we trying to achieve in the meetings that we're having? And who are the people that need to be in those meetings in order to solve the challenges that have already come to us? Right? I, I just want to make sure I'm hearing it the correct way.
And does it need to be a work session? Or is there a different way that we're addressing the issues that GHI has? And maybe better, better addressed in a way that is not a council work session?
Because I think ultimately, GHI is looking to us for some answers to some things. And if we go into a work session where we don't have those answers, then we're going to continue to spin. So whatever we can do to not spin in a meeting, whatever format that looks like, I'm in support of that, to have the solution versus just to have a discussion. However, that, that makes sense.
Very problematic issue. It's, it's very difficult. And, and, and it's really between WSSC and GHI. And, and we want to be helpful, but it's, it's.
Yeah.
I mean, we've been working on this for many years and we haven't come to a.
What, what do you think, Ms. Pope, about the meeting? I'm just, I'm just, because you do also have a lot of history with this.
Well, I can't, you know, if, if, I think if we talk to them, we, we should come, we, we as a combined body should be talking to them. Um, and I do, I do agree, if we have a meeting, we need to have the right people in the room. But that's going to be, that's going to be a bigger session. I mean, this is going to be a full-blown-out meeting. And, and I really think that's, if we do it, we should, we should, we should do it the right way.
Uh, Mr. Roberts?
Well, the pipe issue, replacing the, the pipes, is not just a GHI issue. It's a city issue because we're party to the agreement that took place back in, whenever it was, 50, whatever it was. So, yeah, we're responsible. We are a party on that, on that agreement. And we're responsible for making sure that people have clean water. And if you got old pipes that are falling apart, it's not going to be very clean. So that, that one issue definitely is a, a city issue as well because we have a responsibility there. The rest of the stuff, you know, the, the thing up at the library and, and all this, the walk and artwork and stuff, no, that's a different issue. But I'm not in favor of this. I don't like this talk about, oh, let's send a council member or a couple of council members to talk with them. No, if we're going to meet with GHI, meet with them. But we shouldn't have to meet with them every couple of months because they have a couple of issues going on. You know, they're not happy about the, the walk thing or whatever it is. That shouldn't relegate us to having to have a, a meeting all of a sudden, you know? But the one issue that we should really take seriously though is the pipe issue. So, you know, we need to separate them things out. We need to separate out what's really important and what is, you know, is not so important.
Yeah, very good, very good. So I'm going to go with the will of council. Let's, let's cancel that meeting with GHI. We'll just leave that, uh, date, the 26th, 26th, open. So at this time, if there's no, for, actually, just a quick update, we did have a meeting of the Maryland Municipal League Legislative Committee, and I have a list of bills that would be supported, supported with an amendment or opposed, and I haven't had time to transcribe the results of the meeting, so I can send that out, it's a little frustrating, we have this paper document, where there's really, there's really no room to write in notes or anything.
There's no room for notes.
So that's why I need to transcribe it a little bit, one, I was, we were able to get support with an amendment on the bottle bill, I spoke very passionately, as did the Hinesville, Upper Marlboro, and. So I'll provide an update in writing.
Thanks for doing that, that's pretty exciting.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody, let's close.
And thanks for sending out the, I appreciate also that you, I'm, I'm talking, I also appreciate that you send out the MML, like, their spreadsheet, that's really helpful, so, I appreciate that, thank you.
Is it council's will that we adjourn now, or would you like to take a public comment?